Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. If you could all take your seats. I understand that we have a quorum. This is a reduced quorum per vote of the Select Board under the emergency legislation that we're operating under in the Commonwealth now. But we are above our quorum of 100 for today. So, thank you all for coming. I hereby call to order the Town of Carlisle Annual Town Meeting of April 25, 2022. My name is Wayne Davis, and I am your town moderator. Thank you all for coming, for being here on time, and for supplying us this quorum. I've inspected the return of service of the warrant and determined it has been properly served. I will assume the consent of the meeting to waive the reading of the warrant. Without hearing no objection, the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. The fire exits are to your left at the front and rear of the auditorium, here and there. If we need to evacuate the room, then I will adjourn the meeting until tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM back here in the same location. In the cafeteria, the fire exits are also in the right and left corners. I would ask that you all take a moment to turn off the ringer on your cellphone and the sounds on any other electronic devices, Fitbits, et cetera, that you might be wearing. As you all are probably aware, we've tried to come up with COVID safety protocols that are protective, comfortable, and suited to the general level of risk that we're at today, and I thank the Board of Health for working with me on that. Are there any questions about what we're doing? Most of us up here on the stage will be wearing our masks, but as I'm doing now, it's a lot easier to hear people with the masks off, so when we're speaking, it's okay to remove the masks. At this time, I'd like to ask each person on the stage behind me to introduce him or herself, and starting here with our town clerk.
Peggy Wang, Town Clerk.
Nathan Brown, Board of Selectmen, our Select Board.
David Modell, Select Board Vice Chair.
Barney Arnold, excuse me, Barney Arnold, Chair of the Select Board.
Kate Reed, Select Board.
Luca Scolillo, Select Board. Our mics don't work. I think it's a hint.
If you don't work on that, Luke, we may have to replace you with a millennial. In back, please.
Tom Harrington, Town Council.
Ethan Dibley, Town Council.
Okay, and with the Finance Committee?
Jim Dar, Chair of Finance Committee.
Melissa McMorrow, Finance Committee.
James Catatrio, Finance Committee.
Scott Girollo, Finance Committee.
Victor Liang, Finance Committee.
Lynn Lipinski, Vice Chair, Finance Committee.
Thank you. We have set up the cafeteria to accommodate parents with small children and to provide additional seating so that we can all maintain social distance. We didn't quite know how many people we would have showing up. I see at least one person sitting in the cafeteria along with our Assistant Moderator, Gretchen Andereg of 871 Bedford Road. I have appointed her to that position and sworn her to that position to assist with procedures there in the cafeteria. Gretchen, can you hear us there all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and did everyone hear that there? Could you, could I ask the sound to just pump the volume so we can test and make sure that everyone here can hear? Gretchen, could you respond?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and could you?
Actually speak out the mic from, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, just wanted to make sure that we could hear you in this, in this room. Great. In a few moments, I will review with you the procedures that we follow here at town meeting, but before we do that, I'd like to ask Barney Arnold, the Chair of the Select Board, to make a few comments.
I think I'm gonna take this off for a second. It is my pleasure to recognize the town employees and town volunteers for their service. First, I'd like to mention our Town Administrator, Tim Goddard, who many of you, I'm sure, have known over the years. He served as our Town Administrator for 13 years and just retired on April 1st, his birthday, and we wish him well and thank him for his many years of service to our town and to our community. And then for the Board of Assessors, Mary Ann McInerney, Administrative Assistant, who served us for 13 years, Melissa Stamp, who was our Principal Assessor and served us for 21 years, and I want to say that in terms for Melissa that we're very sad that she passed away, and we send our deepest condolences to her family. For the Council on Aging, Debbie Farrell, who's the Transportation Coordinator for nine years of service, Peter Cullinan, Social Worker, for 13 years of service. In the Carlisle Public Schools, Liz Perry, 7th grade math teacher, 39 years of service, Jane White, the Main Office Receptionist, 27 years of service, Rich Price, Maintenance Lead and Supervisor, and I think I saw him here this evening, for 26 years of service. And then for the Fire Department, Tom Bishop, 19 years of service, Michael DeRoche, 3 years of service, Carrie Patel, 3 years of service, Doug Stevenson, Sr., 39 years of service. And in the Finance Department, Kathy Hens, Assistant Treasurer and Collector, for 4 years of service. And then for the Planning Board, George Mansfield, who is our Planning Administrator for 25 And for elected and appointed officials, I want to say first that I know we've left some people off of this. It's hard to follow the many volunteers that helped make our town run so well, and so we will do our best to make sure we get the full list that'll go to the mosquito after this event. But what we do know is that for the Conservation Commission, Angie Verge, 5 years of service, Ken Belitz, 8 years of service. For the Cultural Council, Karen Kleeger, 2 years of service, Kenny Selisser, 2 years of service. Under the Recreation Commission, Amy Smack, 6 years of service. And for the Finance Committee, Jim Dar, our current Chair, who has reached the end of his 3 terms allowed by bylaw, and we thank you very much for his 9 years of service. And I'd like to ask Luke to come up, please, Luca Scolillo, and followed by Nathan Brown.
So, the folks that have been working in town and who have been heavily involved might notice that we missed somebody from the Finance Group. That was intentional. For those of you who are in Town Hall and who are actively, you know, in and out of those doors on a regular basis, you may or may not see this person. She's always tucked around the corner, working away diligently, and she's been doing that for 21 years. That's our Town Accountant, Priscilla Dumka. I don't see her here, unfortunately, because she would hate if I called her out and asked her to stand up. And that's actually, that epitomizes Priscilla. You know, she's one of the workhorses in town that really kept us all in check. I mean, you know, my time on the Select Board, I was on CONSCOM, I was on CPC, and, you know, anytime there was a question, ask Priscilla, right? And she always had the answer. You know, Bill's sitting over there, the countless hours that she put in for the CARES Act to make sure that we got funds approved. It just, I, I, sorry. Now, Priscilla's just, you know, she's one of those that never wanted the recognition, always worked behind the scenes, and just wanted to do what was best for Carlisle. And she's really, truly going to be missed. We have a great replacement with Kelly. You know, Kelly's been stepping in and filling some big shoes, but I think, you know, those of you that knew Priscilla, you know, fully understand just what she meant to Carlisle. She's a resident, and, you know, like most of us volunteers, I think, you know, she cares just as much as anybody, if not more, you know, because she really is the gatekeeper for so many of us that, you know, sometimes want to, I don't want to say take the easy road, right, but, you know, the non-controversial road, she always kept us in check. So, again, I don't see her, unfortunately, but I just want to thank Priscilla for the 21 years of service, and, you know, hopefully she will serve in some other capacity down the road, but she definitely earned the, earned the rest, so.
Somebody else who's leaving I want to recognize, and that is Luke, who is just speaking. He has been on the Board of Selectmen for 6 years, while he's tirelessly worked on many other boards long before and while on the Board of Selectmen. But during these past 6 years is when I've really gotten to know him, and he has been a tremendous asset to the Board. He's worked tirelessly to forward many initiatives and to support our town staff, as was just demonstrated in his talking about Priscilla. Luke has been a get-it-done person. He works quietly and efficiently, and he always keeps in touch with the groups that he is a liaison for. Luke's become a friend of mine over these past 6 years. I'm really gonna miss him. He has such a strong knowledge of the town. He has strong ties to Carlisle residents. He has an uncanny ability to know what the reaction to a certain issue is going to be, and he really has a team-oriented approach. So, thank you very much, Luke. We're gonna miss you.
So, now we are on to procedures, and I hate to be the spoiler. The applause that you've just been giving our town employees and volunteers, of course, is most welcome, but unfortunately, that's it for the night. As we, as we move into the consideration of the issues, ask you not to react, either applause, boos, or anything like that, and conduct ourselves appropriately. I'm going to give a sort of abbreviated overview of the, of the procedures tonight. I know many of you are veterans, and this will be an old hat to you, but as always, there are a few newcomers in the audience, and we certainly warmly welcome you, and I hope you'll, you'll have fun with, with what we're doing tonight. If you have the beige Town Warrant Book, either brought with you, or there were, there were some out front, there is a summary of town meeting procedures starting at page 3, along with a glossary of terms at page 6. That'll give you a little bit more detail than I'm discussing right now. And if you really want to do a deep dive, and you have an electronic device with you, you can go to our town website, carlislema.gov, and go on the Town Meeting webpage, and there are extensive discussion of procedures available there. I should, since I mentioned the warrant book, let me say that in my view, my personal opinion, the most important page in the warrant book is page 2. That's the Volunteer Response Form. This town, we've got lots of great employees, it's, it's true, but the heart and soul of the town do run on volunteers, and I would invite all of you to please consider how you might help out. In addition to the warrant books, I do hope that each of you has picked up the motions handout, which looks like this, that was on, on the table. The warrant, just so you understand, the warrant is kind of like the agenda. It gives the town notice in advance of more or less the topics that we're going to be talking about. The actual things that you're voting on will be motions, and in some cases, those motions will be a little bit more detailed or differ in some small way from what you see in the warrant book, so it's important to pay attention to the motions. To those of you who will be making the motions, if the motion is rather lengthy, feel free to just say, you can either read it if it's a couple lines, but if it's lengthy, you can say, "I move Article 10," or whatever number, "as printed in the motions handout." I think you all can see we have microphones in the aisles and in the back, as well as in the cafeteria. If you can, please move to the, when we get to the debate portion, please move to a microphone in advance of requesting to speak, and when I recognize you, if I can, if my fading eyesight can, can see you, I'll call you by name, and if I can guess who you are behind your mask. Otherwise, our microphones are numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, and I may just call and point to you that way. The meeting is being both taped and livestreamed on cable TV, so I do ask that each time you speak, you identify yourself with your name and your street address, even if you've spoken previously. Our time limits for speakers are 8 minutes for the main presentation, 3 minutes for comments from the floor, with the exception that since the budget is, you know, the biggest, most complicated thing that the town needs to consider each year, we do allow extra time for FinCom to present the budget. I do ask that anyone speaking, please keep to those limits, and just remember, Lincoln fit the Gettysburg Address in less than 3 minutes, and everyone remembers what he had to say, so just keep that in mind. Kindly address your comments to me, rather to anyone else who has spoken. I expect that this meeting will, as we've traditionally done here in Carlisle, adhere to the norm of treating all participants with dignity and respect by listening attentively and without interruptions. I don't know whether we'll have anything particularly contentious tonight, or some major disagreements. If we do, that's okay. That's probably even good. That's what we're here for, and that's what democracy is about. We don't all think alike, nor should we. We can, however, disagree without being disagreeable. Let's discuss each article in an honest, focused, and respectful way. Amendments. We have a simple rule here. If all you're doing is suggesting changing a word or two, you know, if you saw a typo or something like that, that's fine to just make that verbally. If it's anything more complicated than 2 words, we do need it in writing, so please be sure to write it out on a piece of paper and hand it to me so that I can then give it to the clerk, and we're sure we have the exact language that you want. In the cafeteria, when we need someone to recognize to be, speak, I'll ask the Assistant Moderator just to let me know by coming to the microphone, and also, I do have, Gretchen, I actually have a monitor so I can see you, but the rest of the audience can't, okay? All right. Voting. Most of the votes we'll do tonight will be by voice, but if we're in any doubt, I will ask for a show of cards. Does everyone who is a registered voter have your blue voting card? So be prepared to show those if I ask for them. And if we get to a counted vote, I'll give you detailed instructions at that time. And let me thank in advance the tellers who have been lined up to help us count votes tonight, and they've all been sworn in. Guests. Do we have anyone in the auditorium who's not a registered voter here in Carlisle? We've got, okay, we've got a couple, and you should all be over there, except for maybe have a few young ones scattered about. Okay, for the most part, we like to have our non-voters over there. Non-voters are not allowed to address the meeting unless we, you get the meeting's prior consent. We do that in 2 ways. One is we'll, we'll adopt a motion to allow a certain class of people to do it just for whatever reason, and otherwise, you'll, you would have to ask a voter in town to propose that you speak. But traditionally, we do recognize a variety of employees, volunteers, or advisors to the town, so let me ask, unless there is any objection, I will assume the consent of the meeting to recognize the following non-voters to speak. Non-voter-appointed members of any town or regional committees or task forces, non-voter employees of the Town of Carlisle, including the Carlisle Public Schools, non-voter management employees of the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District, and Town Council. And with all of those individuals, permission to speak limited to topics relevant to their official capacity with the town. Is there any objection to allowing those people to speak? Okay, seeing no objection, consent of the meeting to allow these various categories of non-voters is granted. Okay, now that we've covered speaking, talking about listening, if anything interferes with your ability to hear, see, or otherwise participate in the proceedings, you may interrupt the meeting with a point of privilege to request that we rectify the situation. Also, please know that we do have special headsets available here if anyone needs a little extra amplification of sound. Does anyone need help with that? Okay. Are there any questions about the procedures? Okay, now to get down to our first official piece of business. I now recognize Mr. Steve Ledoux, the Interim Town Administrator, to provide the annual report to town meeting on the Patriot Act.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, Town Meeting. There were no investigations by the Police Department under the Patriot Act for the past year. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think, you know, this will probably be his only town meeting, so I think we might as well just take an opportunity to thank our interim town administrator. Even if he lives in Concord, we won't hold that against him. Okay. We are now ready to move to Article 1, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. Article 1 is essentially a procedural rule under which we would vote on Articles 2 through 12 inclusive as a single passage. If we vote to adopt Article 1, and I will call out each article in turn, if you have a question about one of the items on the consent agenda, or if you object to any particular article being included in the consent agenda, please simply say "hold" in a loud voice when the number is called. If you simply have a question, you'll get an opportunity to ask it. If you want the article removed from the consent agenda, then just say so, and the article will be removed automatically, restored to its original place in the warrant, to be debated and voted in the usual manner. Any questions about the consent agenda procedure? Okay. I recognize Ms. Arnold to make the motion under Article 1.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Articles 2 through 12 be considered in one motion, and that the motions for Articles 2 through 12 be hereby adopted as printed in the motions booklet.
Thank you, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Both the Board of, the Select Board and FinCom have voted unanimously to recommend adoption of Article 1, as well as the main motions under Articles 2 through 12. Were there any other boards or committees that made recommendations on any of these articles, 1 through 12? Seeing none. With the consent of town meeting, I will divide the question so that we will first consider whether to adopt the consent agenda procedure, and then separately consider the adoption of Articles 2, 2 through 12. Any objections to my ruling to divide the question? Okay. I would point out that Articles 7 and 11 are both, require 2/3rds' vote to pass, so by including them in the consent agenda, we will need 2/3rds' to pass all of the 11, 11 articles. So, first, on the motion to use the consent agenda procedure, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And the motion carries, and I so declare. Now we'll move to the second question, which is the, the particular article, so let me read through them, and again, if you have either a question or would like to see it removed from the agenda, just say "hold" as I read it. Article 2, Town Reports. Article 3, Salaries of Elected Officials. Article 4, Actuarial Valuation of Post-Employment Benefits. Article 5, Revaluation. Article 6, Real Estate Tax Exemption. Article 7, the FY 2023 Chapter 90 Authorization. Article 8, the Department Revolving Funds Authorization. Article 9, PEG, the Public Educational Government Local Access Appropriation. No holds. Article 10, the Fiscal Year 23 Salary and Wage Table. And then on to Article 11, to accept the Fire Protection Easement for Still Meadow, Still Meadow Farm North Development. And finally, Article 12, rescind $864,742 in borrowing authority authorized under Article 17 of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting for the police station. Okay, no holds on any of those, so there'll be no debate and no separate votes. We'll just vote on all of those as a package, as I said earlier. This does require 2/3rds'. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. And any, was that 2 yes votes in the cafeteria? Yes, okay, so the motion passes unanimously, and I so declare. Okay, we are now on to Article 13, the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Transfers. I recognize Mr. Dar.
This is an annual process where we just try to...
Excuse me, first, you have to make the motion.
Oh, okay, the motion. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $101,477 from group insurance to the budgetary line items listed below.
Thank you, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Okay, Mr. Dar.
Well, I don't have too much to say. This is an annual process where we try to rebalance various accounts. Every year, some go a bit over, some go a bit under. It's just squares everything up.
Thank you. We had recommendations of passage of this from both the Finance Committee and the Select Board. Recommendations from any other town boards or committees. Seeing none, the floor is open for debate. Any comments or questions? Okay, we're ready for a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 14, which is the Fiscal Year 2023 Operating Budget. Mr. Dar, I'll recognize you to make the motion, and then ask you to step down to the front to speak to it.
I move Article 14 as printed in the motions booklet.
Thank you, and is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. It is? You can hear me? Well, good evening. I am here on behalf of the Finance Committee to present the proposed FY 23 Operating Budget. In total, we recommended spending of three point, $33.2 million. That includes all the warrant articles that involve expenditures of town funds. That would be a two-and-a-half percent increase over the current fiscal year, and it would lead to an aggregate increase in property taxes of 3.7 percent, and would leave us with excess levy capacity of just over $3 million. The operating budget itself, which is Article Fourteen, is $32.4 million. That's an increase of 3.2 percent over the current year. Does not require a Prop. Two-and-a-half override. It recommends liquid reserves within the range that finance committees have proposed for years and that rating, bond rating agencies like. And it includes the anticipated cost of the major contracts for police and the teachers. The budget development process began in September and concluded in March. We met with every committee and department that has a budget. As a committee, we met seventeen times. We met an additional four times with the Select Board to talk about priorities, and two weeks ago, we had a budget hearing. The sources of revenue for Carlisle really don't change year to year. Ninety percent of the revenue comes from residential property tax. It's true this year, it'll be true next year, and probably in the future years. State aid is up slightly for next year, and fund transfers, which is mainly free cash, is lower this year, this year meaning '23. It's much higher the current year because when the lockdown occurred, there was significant underspending that gave us more free cash, which we applied to this year's budget. The average tax for single-family residences is shown on this bar graph. You can see that over the last three or four years, it hasn't grown a lot. In fact, in the last three years, counting this year, it's grown 2.8 percent in total, which is less than 1 percent per year. Now, when we look at the average single-family value, that's a little different story. Here, you've got 2023 on it because the taxation rates for individual houses will be based on sales data from calendar 2021. I think most people know house prices were up very significantly. That will result in some reshuffling of the... Sure, you want to take over? Okay, thank you. That'll result in some reshuffling of the taxation among houses. It won't change the bottom line about what needs to be raised to support this budget. Projected town reserves start with free cash. Free cash, you may remember, is the accumulation of underspending that was appropriated but not spent for over the years, plus unexpected revenues that come in during the course of the year. Our stabilization fund, which actually is quite stable at around $1.2 million, it gives us total reserves now of 4.1 million. That would be 11.8 percent of the operating budget, and for years, again, the Finance Committee has recommended keeping it within 10 to 12 percent. I would note here that we expect a little more challenging budget year in fiscal '24, and that is why we did not apply as much free cash this year, perhaps as we might have. Excess levy capacity essentially is how much could the town tax its residents. To calculate that, you start with the current year's levy limit. You add the famous two-and-a-half percent. You add anticipated increase in, from new growth. We're using $300,000 for fiscal '23. That actually would be up from the current year, and it will move us closer to the average of the last ten years. And then exempt debt. Exempt debt is debt that was approved in town meetings like this and at town elections. So you get your total, you subtract from it, in this case, just under $30 million to support fiscal '23's budget, and you get the $3 million, 3.1 million, or 3.2 million of excess levy capacity. That essentially represents a kind of reserve that the town could use if there were a financial emergency, or if the town wanted to make a major investment. And as the slide shows, it's about 9 percent of the operating budget. Town expenses, like town revenues, don't change much year to year. 60 percent of town's expenses go to education, and that doesn't include the debt on the school buildings. The other town departments are 23 percent. The rest of it is insurance and OPEB and retirement for non-teachers, and that makes up the other 17 percent year after year. Wages account for most of the expenditures across departments, 70 to 75 percent. This year, contracted and cold increases are generally at 2 and 1/4 percent. Again, this year's fiscal '23. We think the major union groups will all be under contract through fiscal '25, which is a good point in terms of planning. And then insurance, benefits, and retirement make up an increase of about 4 and 1/2 percent, most of that actually coming from the Middlesex Retirement Plan, where we are committed to amortizing our retirement obligations by 2035, '38. Education increases by half a million dollars. That's 3 percent roughly increase for the Carlisle School, and 2 and 1/2 percent for the high school. I'll go into this more in a moment. Vocational amount of $130,000 represents three students going to regional schools. That number might change when the dust settles on the enrollment process. There we are. The Carlisle budget over the last ten years, including this year, has grown at an annual compound rate of 2 and 1/2 percent. But the year we're in right now, it's growing at 4 percent. Next year, it's 3 percent. We anticipate, I think the school committee does as well, that in '24 and '25, we'll get back closer to that long-term rate of 2 and 1/2 percent. The high school is a little different story. The bars here show the total budget for the high school, and over six years, you can see it's grown at about 4 and 1/2 percent on an annual compound rate. But that steady growth isn't reflected in what we have had to pay, which this bar chart shows. In the current year, we're paying less than we did last year, and the year, and last year, we paid less than the year before. That's because the amount we pay is based on our share of the enrollment in the high school. As of October 1st each year, that is set for the subsequent fiscal year. If you look at that red line that sort of skitters down the page, 10 years ago, we had 28 percent of the students. This year, we have 22 and 1/2 percent. So that's the story of how that can be reduced. However, this slide begins to show what we think is going to happen in the next three to five years. Currently, we have, for fiscal '23, we'll have 22.59 percent of the enrollment, kind of flat to where we are this year. The following year, and the date is pretty solid because these kids are all in seventh grade right now, we expect it'll go up 1 percent, which doesn't seem like much. But if the high school's budget, based on a model that the high school did, would go up 3.2 percent, it would go up 7.4 percent for us, or about $600,000. So that's, you know, even a small movement in the enrollments has a big impact, and we expect additional increases in the coming years. So we're not talking about any radical change in birth rates, or death rates, or anything else. It's just that small change, and it's moving kind of more in our direction. So in terms of where we are overall, you know, it's, as we well know, there isn't much room for us to find new revenues in town. Residential property development is limited. It's not, you know, rare for affluent suburbs like Carlisle. We don't have a lot of new housing, nor do most suburbs similar to Carlisle. So that's just a fact of life, and we don't have commerce. The budget pressures will continue. You know, inflation, you know, like Freddy Krueger, has come back, and, you know, we don't know what effect that'll have over the next several years. No one does, but it's now a factor we have to think a little bit about. So every year, as a committee, we focus on trying to limit the rate of growth, and at the same time, to make sure that the services that the town wants are available for the residents. So recommending a balanced budget for fiscal '23 of $32,448,042. And again, we think this will provide quality services for the residents without an undue tax burden. So thank you, and before I step away, I would like to first thank Victor Liang for creating these slides that I just raced through, and also, since, as Barney said, this is my last of nine years on this committee, I would like to thank the members of the committee, the members of the Finance Committee, for the work that they have done to put this budget together. It's really a group effort. It has been great to work with them, and I think the committee will serve the town very well in the years ahead. Thank you.[1281.33][1281.33](APPLAUSE). Okay, well, I'll rule that as thank you applause to Mr. Dar for his nine years of service. It was not a comment on the quality of your presentation, because we don't do that. Okay, thank you. So we have certainly the recommendation from both FinCom and from the Select Board that the budget be approved. First, let me ask, did any other town boards or committees take a vote and have a recommendation on this? Typically not on the budget. Okay, seeing none, the floor is open for debate and/or questions, and I would just ask, we seem to be light enough here in terms of audience, so please just move to the microphone if you'd like to speak, and I will recognize you. So I thought you were coming to sit down. I knew you'd disappoint me.[1355.13][1355.13](LAUGHING). Okay, anyone wish to speak? Okay, well, we'll do ladies first, John, if you don't mind. At microphone, too, please.
Hi, Diane.
Please, yeah, please step closer to the microphone if you could.
Diane Geggis, 296 Brook Street. I just, Moderator, I have one question on the, under general government, general expense in town hall. I'd like to know why the significant increase for fiscal year 2023 over 2022 budget.
Okay, any other, let me just ask, or anyone else out there have a question on the general Okay, so let me ask FinCom to address that, it's a good question.
Probably the biggest single reason is that we are endorsing the Select Board's recommendation of hiring an assistant, creating the position of an assistant town administrator who would also oversee human resources for the town. So that full position is in that increase. There are a couple of other things. As we alluded to earlier, we're looking for a new town administrator. We expect that, like with so many jobs that turnover, to pay a higher wage for that than in the past. And then there's a item in here related to some construction at the Ripley Building that will also be part of that line item. But the big thing is the assistant town administrator.
Thank you. I recognize Mr. Ballantyne.
John Ballantyne, 2668 Fifth Street. First, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the work that the FinCom has done over the years and presenting a perspective of what's happening. As you know, the Master Planning Committee has put out a draft of their plan, and two of the recommendations concern the financial, longer-term finances of the, of the town and committee, and I was wondering whether you have a comment on that, and also, a longer-term facilities plan, sort of looking out ten years, and how this fits into how we think about our future.
Okay, fair question. Anyone from FinCom like to address those?
Would you mind summarizing the question, Mr. Moderator?
Okay, I think that Mr. Ballantyne was asking about, you commented on some of the long-term prospects for the town, and I think the question was, to what extent were some of the recommendations from the master plan draft report, are they, how do they factor into the prospectus that you discussed?
Well, the master plan has an awful lot of information in it, and I would have to say that it doesn't factor in directly, because when you're doing the annual budgeting, what you're really doing is you're building on, you know, in some cases, decades of prior decisions made by town meetings. But I think some of the data background is helpful in thinking about not just one year, but multiple years.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other comments, questions, debate? Anything in the cafeteria? Looks like not, okay. So with that, it looks like we are ready to move to a vote. And given the, normally, I call out the, each of the individual line items, but given the lack of serious question or debate on this, do I have the meeting's consent just to move to a vote on the budget in its entirety, including all the individual line items? Seeing, seeing no objection, we will move directly to a vote. We're voting on Article Fourteen, the Fiscal Year 23 Budget, at $32,448,042, as printed in the motions handout. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, and I so declare. Article Fifteen addresses, addresses the capital equipment budget for the next fiscal year. I recognize Mr. Triola.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the fiscal year 2022 Undesignated Fund Balance, free cash, the sum of $269,000 to be available at the close of this town meeting for the projects listed in the table contained in the motions booklet.
Thank you, and is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Triola, do you want to explain this one?
Sure. As part of the budgeting, planning process, the Finance Committee reviews and recommends capital expenses. Generally speaking, capital expenses are non-recurring expenses that individually exceed $10,000 and have a useful life of more than three years. For fiscal '23, the capital requests we received from the town were just over $700,000, and the Finance Committee prioritized and recommends the seven items listed in Article Fifteen, totaling $269,000. I'm just going to briefly run through these items. The police hybrid cruiser, this is a Ford Pursuit Hybrid Cruiser, that's part of the planned cruiser fleet replacement schedule. The police AFIS machine, AFIS stands for Automated Fingerprint Machine, will allow the police department to capture, store, and process digital fingerprints. This will greatly speed up the current manual fingerprint system and significantly reduce physical proximity during this process. Police firearms, this is a mandatory scheduled replacement of police firearms. Fire Department UTV, or Utility Terrain Vehicle, will allow for more rapid medical response in off-road environments, and also reduce physical demands placed on our emergency responders for situations that cannot be reached via roads. And then the two-town DPW dump trucks. These dump trucks play an integral role in a variety of DPW operations, and the current dump trucks are either at or past the end of their useful life and need to be replaced. There is currently no suitable electric or hybrid option for these trucks currently available for Carlisle, and I would say Ford and some municipalities have begun testing electric dump trucks and hybrid dump trucks. So hopefully, in the future, we can look into those options, but in this case, these are traditional ICE vehicles.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommended passage of this article, as did the Select Board. Did any other boards or committees take a vote on this? Okay, floor is open for debate. Okay, floor is open for debate. Any comments or questions? Okay, see, is there moving, do you want to be recognized in back there? I can't quite see who you are. You can remove your mask if you're comfortable.
Okay, I'm Henry Haddon, 90 East Riting Drive. I just had a quick question about the hybrid cruiser. To clarify, is the current cruiser in need of replacement?
Mr. Triola?
The cruiser it's replacing, yes, it needs to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, on behalf of the meeting, I'll thank the committee for listening to the feedback from prior town meetings about use of hybrid vehicles for the police. Okay, we're ready to move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 16 is an appropriation for municipal facilities. I recognize Mr. Lerman to make the motion.
I'm Jerry Lerman, 218 Stern Street. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $350,000 for facilities, maintenance, and improvement projects at Town Hall, the police station, the fire station, Gleason Library, Department of Public Works, the Bog House, and the Highland Building, all of which projects being expected to be completed by June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. And is there, and we have the second? Mr. Lerman, please speak to the article.
This is, this is the fifth year that we've had a motion allocating money for maintenance of town buildings. So far, the amount of money that has been appropriated is about 1.4 million. With this motion, it would bring the number to just under 1.8 million. So far, the committee has expended $775,000 on projects, with more than $1 million worth of projects currently in the pipeline. Those are projects that we know about. It doesn't account for any emergencies or unforeseen incidents that might pop up. I would urge town meeting to approve this appropriation.
Thank you. Finance committee and Select Board both recommended passage of this article. Did any other boards and committees take a vote on this? I presume the Municipal Facilities Committee recommended approval. Any others? Okay, the floor is open for debate. Any questions, comments? Okay, at microphone four, please.
Lana Somaro, 398 Lowell Street. I'm just, it's a question. I'd like to know to what extent, if appropriate or relevant, are energy efficiency or, yeah, energy efficiency essentially, or emissions reductions in any way factored in to plans for renovations?
Thank you. Mr. Lerman, could you address that, please?
Yes, indeed. That's a topic that we always discuss. We have to walk a fine line between doing what we can afford and doing what is perhaps the greenest solution. We always look at all of the alternatives and try to make a decision for what is best for the town.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, arguments? Okay, seeing none, we're ready to move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Onto Article 17, which is the Senior Tax Deferral Program. I, well, let's see. I recognize Ann Quennen from the Council on Aging to make the motion. Or Jerry Lerman, I'm sorry. Mr. Lerman, please.
I move warrant Article 17 as written in the motions handout.
Thank you. And is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Lerman?
To speak to this motion, I'd like to introduce Joan Ingersoll, the Director of the Council on Aging.
Thank you.
Joan Ingersoll, Director of the Council on Aging. We worked with the Board of Assessors to look at this program that has been in existence but has not been used in the last few years, in an effort to make it easier for seniors in financial need to stay and to remain in their homes. So we are proposing to make two adjustments to the way Carlisle has been operating the program, to lower the interest rate from 8% to 6%, and to increase the maximum household gross income from, it says in the book 20,000, but Carlisle had already amended it to 40,000. So really, we're just changing it from 40,000 to 62,000, which is the maximum allowed by law right now in the state. And we think that this is a senior-friendly thing to do, and the assessors and the COA agree that we are not going to go from zero to a unsupportable number of people taking part in the program. We would be happy if the people who need it most felt more comfortable taking part in that program.
Thank you. We had a recommendation from the Select Board to pass Article 17. Was there any recommendation from FinCom on this?
We did not take a position on this article.
Okay. Did any other boards or committees, presumably Council on Aging is proposing it, so they're in favor? Yes?
I'm Ken Mustello. I am the Chair of the Board of Assessors. We worked with the Council on Aging on this proposal. We feel it is fiscally prudent, as currently proposed, and we voted unanimously to endorse it.
Thank you. Any other boards or committees we need to hear from? Okay, floor is open for debate. No questions. Let me just confer with the town clerk, one second. Okay, Mr. Lerman, my understanding from previous correspondence with you and from Joan's remarks was that the current, current limit is 40,000 and not 20,000? And so I thought you were going to make the motion by reading it and saying 40,000, since as printed in the motions handout, wasn't exactly what we meant there. Since you already made the motion, do you want to propose an amendment to change 20,000 to 40,000 in the motion as printed?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend the motion to read from 40,000 to 62,000 annually.
Okay, so to change it so that it reads in the third line from 40,000 to 62,000, so that would just, where the proposed amendment changes 20 to 40 in that line. Is there a second to that amendment? Okay, so as Ms. Ingersoll commented, there was just a little typo here. The current program is already at a $40,000 limit, so we would be voting, if the amendment passes, we'd move it from 20 to 40 so that it comports with reality. So just a little housekeeping amendment here. Any debate on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, which would be to change 20 to 40 in this motion. All those in favor? Any opposed, nay? Okay, the motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Any debate on the amended motion? Okay, so we're on to the main motion, so it's as printed in the motions handout, except changing 20 to 40. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 18 would amend the Green Cemetery fees, and I recognize Mr. Ascalillo to make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve amendments, the established fees at Green Cemetery as proposed by the Select Board, acting in its capacity as cemetery commissioners, as presented in the table below. Burial plot, $150, perpetual care, $150, grave opening and burial, $500, and cremation burial, $250.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Ascalillo.
So we took a look at this this year. The cemetery fees have not been updated in a number of years. And essentially, the main costs are, you know, the grave opening and burials. And it's actually been a losing proposition for the town for years. It actually costs more than the fees were bringing in. So what we tried to do was just, you know, bring it to a point where they're at least breaking even. So that's why we proposed this.
Thank you. And Ms. Arnold, did the Select Board vote to make a recommendation on this?
Yes, we did. We voted unanimously to support this motion, this article.
Thank you. And does the FinCom have a recommendation on this?
We did not take a position on this article.
Okay, thank you. Any other boards or committees take a vote on this? Okay, floor is open for questions, comments, debate. Okay, seeing none, I will proceed to the vote. This is Article 18, Amending the Green Cemetery Fees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 19 is a capital project, and I recognize for paving the access road and adding lighting at the high school. I recognize Sarah Wilson to make the motion. All right, let's just start with making the motion, and then we'll get on to the presentation in a minute after that.
So I move to make a motion to approve, for Article 19, to approve CCHS access road paving lighting, to see if the town will vote to approve $853,665 or any other sum of debt authorized by the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee for repaving and lighting of the access road, as determined by the school committee, provided, however, that this approval shall be contingent upon passage of a proposition, two-and-a-half debt exclusion referendum, under Massachusetts General Laws 5921 CK, to accept the town's eligible share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing, or take any other action related thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Wilson?
So hi, Sarah Wilson, 646 South Street. And this is Eva Mustufi.
1173 North Road.
North Road. And we are the Carlisle representatives on the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee. We are here to introduce Dr. Lori Hunter, who's here to present the presentation on this. Just wanted to note that in the five years that Dr. Hunter has been Superintendent at Concord-Carlisle, there's never been a motion brought to a Carlisle town meeting for capital article. So this is Dr. Hunter's first time here, so we want to welcome her. And we just want to give a little context about what, about the access road, before Dr. Hunter presents the facts. The access road is a little bit of a misnomer. It is not really, when I think of access road, I think of peripheral or service road. This is the only access to our campus, and it was never repaved or rebuilt during the school construction project, and...
Yes, so this is why the safety and integrity of this road is so important. Since the high school was built, this, this access road was never repaved, rebuilt. It has, in past several years, it has undergone several temporary patches, including temporary lighting a few years back. If you're coming to visit BD Center or have students at the high school, kids participating in sports, practicing, or playing on campus fields, you know the condition of this road and understand the concern about the safety and accessibility that this warrant article will cover. Safety, accessibility, and well, of this road, and well-lit walkway is very important to the campus.
So I want to thank fellow school committee members from Concord who are here, Cynthia Rainey, Court Booth, and I saw Tracy Murano, and Jared Stanton, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, are all here. And with that, Dr. Hunter, please come explain how to make the access road more accessible for all of us. Thank you.
So I've been to Carlisle Town Meeting every year for the last five, and I'm finally privileged enough to be able to speak with you, so grateful for that. While the slides are coming up, we'll just state the obvious, I think, here, is we actually had proposed an article three years ago, pre-COVID, that had included parking, and it failed in Concord, so we never brought it here. And so here we are today with paving only, and really just trying to reinstate the quality of the road itself. Very good, thank you. So just in a quick overview, we're here tonight asking for funds that you will cost share with Concord, obviously, to reconstruct the access road. It's in that level of repair need at this point. Install lighting along the road, replace what's currently there, repair the sidewalk and curbing. The access road is described just now as the only entrance to the high school campus, looping from the Thoreau Street entrance to the Walden Street entrance. Once you're up in there, you can make choices where you're going, but it is the only way in and out. This article comes after multiple attempts at gathering as much information as we can could. We worked with Gale Associates to gather information a few years ago. Everything has been deemed in poor condition, no matter how many people we have look at it, so that is a consensus. This engineering firm agreed with that. We have ponding and damaged and cracked uneven pavement at the Walden Street entrance, which correlates with the Thoreau Street poor condition. The entire length, and I have some really great photos to zip through with you in a minute, has alligator cracks, patches, and potholes. The strength of the road has failed essentially, and we're now to needing to replace the underlying material as well. Sidewalks and curbing are very in need of repair and a safety hazard, for sure. The town of Concord has participated and collaborated with us extensively, so they did all of the engineering work in partnership with us, beginning with a review this past few months. They have deemed it in poor quality and the lowest rating of the rates, rating systems that they use. They helped to do the engineering study so that we could bring you as best cost estimate as possible. So that's what you will see here, the paving of the roadway in its entirety with the upgrades and lighting, and I'll break it down in a minute, is a $1.053665 million project. Last spring, COVID, similar to what was stated already for other departments, allowed a surplus at the high school that the Regional School Committee voted to put into a Regional School District Stabilization Fund for events like this, so that we had some ability to help subsidize the different projects that might come up across the communities. That's leaving us a cost that we're bringing to both towns of $853,665. Just a reminder, that's the total project cost. Your portion in Carlisle will be based on the percentage of enrollment numbers that Jim referenced earlier, and those are just noted here again. In the borrowing process, that'll shift a bit year to year, so that there's not one number we can give you, but it will be aggregated out over the costs, the... number we can give you, but it will be aggregated out over the costs, the terms of whatever borrowing happens in Carlisle. So, somewhere around 23% to 24% of this. When we break it out to just put the road costs separate from the other upgrades, we're looking at $830,565. The lighting and all the work that would go with it is $223,000 of the overall cost, so we thought it was interesting and informative to show you those two pieces. This, these were the photos we took in 2019. I'm not going to walk through each one, but you can see it's indicative of the need of repair at the time, the entire length of the roadway at this point. And when we upgraded our photos recently, you can see what's happened, is it's just gotten worse. And these are conditions that have existed pre-construction for a school that's been open for almost seven years. So, we've been living on this, and we do need to to ask for help to finally replace it. Just other examples of the conditions that we're operating under currently across all of the entrances. There is built-in contingency, wanted to be sure to make note of that, given the volatility of markets and such right now. There's a 6% inflation built in, 15% contingency, and 7.5% for soft costs. So, we're as sure of this number as you really can be in this environment, and expect that it's going to be sufficient. Carlisle and Concord timelines, they are not perfectly lined up in the process. We are at Concord Town Meeting on Sunday. This does require a ballot vote because of the debt borrowing processes, so on the Carlisle ballot on May 10th, there would have to be a passing vote there, in addition to passage tonight. Concord is not actually putting it on its ballots, which have already occurred, actually, in April. It is going to be delayed until the governor's primary in September, on September 6th. So, there will be some time lag there as Concord finishes its its process. So, that's the ask tonight, is for $853,665, Carlisle's portion, to be borrowed over a period of time determined by Carlisle, and repair the roadway and put this project to bed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. FinCom and Select Board both recommend passage of the motion under Article 19. Their recommendations from many other town boards or committees. Carlisle's Public School Committee, I presume, is recommending approval. Did you take a vote? No, you didn't take a vote? Just assumed. Okay. Any other town boards or committees? The floor is open for questions or debate. Okay, seeing none. This, since this is debt, this is, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. My apologies. Please proceed.
Chris Peterson, 120 Evergreen Lane. I just have a question on alternative flow during the construction.
And precise question is?
What are, what's the plan for alternative traffic flow during construction?
Okay. Ms. Hunter?
Thank you. So, we're going to be looking for the most optimal timeline to do this project. We still have to firmly settle on that, given the timing of the Concord vote in September. It will likely have to occur during a long weekend of vacation. Summer, one of those options. It will be very hard to manage school during during this level of disruption, so thanks for asking.
Anything else? Yes, please.
Kay Hurley, 392 School Street. I just have a question on the wording of the motion. Are we approving $853,000, or are we approving any other sum?
Allow me a moment to confer with Town Council, because these things are always written by bond counsel, who do strange things. So, one moment, please. We're approving the amount. Any other questions or debate on this one? Okay, as a debt article, this is two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. I hear a few scattered nays, but the certainly well more than two-thirds, and I so declare motion carries. Onto Article 20, which is to amend the general bylaws to change the name of the Council on Aging. Mr. Lerman, are you going to make this motion?
Jerry Lerman, 218 Stern Street. I move that the town, oops, wrong one. I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by striking the term "Council on Aging" wherever it may appear in said bylaws, and inserting in place thereof the term "Council on Aging and Human Services."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lerman, speak to the motion.
With your permission, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask Joan Ingersoll, the Director of what I hope will soon be the Council on Aging and Human Services, to speak to the motion.
Sure. Ms. Ingersoll, please.
Joan Ingersoll, Director of the Council on Aging. The COA Board, in conjunction with the staff, came up with this proposal because we have long been serving people under 60, as well as people over 60, although it is not as well-known among people under 60. Our transportation program has served people who have disabilities, regardless of their age, and our staff has worked with people to get fuel assistance and food assistance, and to help them with referrals to services regardless of their age. So, we've been functioning as a human services department within the town, and recently, in the beginning of the fiscal year, our reorganization was formalized, so that we have a full-time social service manager, Carol. And so, we have been spending time working with people in addition to the seniors. So, while this doesn't change our priority, or our focus, or our devotion to the senior community, we really want people in the schools, families, younger residents, people who don't think of themselves as seniors, to know that they can come to us for assistance in a variety of ways, particularly people who are in severe financial need. So, as other towns have done, we thought that changing the name to include Human Services would signal to the community that we are here to help anybody who needs us, and we are hoping to start, we are going to start distributing our bi-monthly newsletter townwide, instead of to just people 60 and over. And if this does pass, our plan is to do some rebranding and to try to publicize the fact that we can serve people who are not seniors. And by the way, most of the funds that we use to do that come from the Concord-Carlisle Community Chest, who specifically designate funding for us to use for fuel assistance, food assistance, holiday assistance, and emergencies for families and younger residents. And should the need increase because of the name change, I will be working with the Community Chest to increase our annual allocation from them to meet whatever need we identify.
Thank you. If you could just clarify, I'll ask on behalf of the meeting, so just just to be clear, this is a change in name only, it is not a change in the scope of services that are currently provided. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're already doing it. We just want more people to know that we're doing it.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying. The Select Board has recommended passage. Do we have any recommendations from any other boards or committees? Seeing none, floor is open for debate. Anything? Okay. We will proceed then to a vote. This is on Article 20, to change the name of the Council on Aging to the Council on Aging and Human Services. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 21 addresses military pay for town employees called to active duty. I recognize Ms. Reed.
I move, we approve Article 22 as written in the motion's handbook.
I think you meant to say Article 21.
Sorry, I didn't mean 21. Sorry.
I'm a mind reader. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Reed, could you please explain the motion?
Last summer, we revised our personnel handbook, and we updated what needed to be updated in there, and this was one of the items that needed to be brought into line with the state law.
Thank you. Select Board recommended passage. Do we have votes from any other town boards or committees to report? Seeing none, the floor is open for debate. Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. There's a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 21, adopting the Chapter 33, Section 59 of the Mass General Laws, reactive military pay for town employees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 22 would accept Chapter 32B, Section 90, 3/4, around health insurance premium for surviving spouses of insured employees. I recognize Mr. Brown from the Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that no action be taken.
And is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, so let me explain. As noted in your motion handout, the Select Board does not wish to make an affirmative motion. In other words, while they put this on the warrant on further consideration, they didn't want to recommend anything for your approval. Therefore, they've, they're not, they don't want to move anything. So, all this is, is basically a housekeeping motion to close the door and enable us to move on to further business. Any discussion on the motion? Majority vote. So, the motion is to take no action, so if this is adopted, it means nothing happens, we just move on with the rest of the meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 23 is an appropriation for the Munis Cash Module. I recognize Mr. Dar.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $7,500 to be expended by the treasurer to acquire an additional software module for the Munis accounting system.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Dar, could you explain this one?
Well, I would, the best person to explain it would be our Treasurer, Kim Kane. I don't know whether Kim is still here. Yes, good.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think I captured it pretty much in my summary, but we have Munis Software, which is an accounting software. Right now, the cashbook is on Excel, which is separate from the general ledger. So, this would integrate the cashbook with the general ledger. It would do everything real-time, much more effective, efficient, also helps with requirements for state and local reporting. So, it would integrate the whole accounting system, and the minute cash is put in the cashbook, it's put into the general ledger. So, it's all real-time.
Thank you. Both FinCom and the Select Board have voted approval. Recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Seeing none, floor is open for debate. Yes, sir.
Alan Lewis, 282 East Riding Drive. Is this an one-time expenditure or an annual expenditure?
Of the $7,500, $1,200 would be a fee that would be every year incorporated in also with all the other modules that we have. So, everything except for $1,200 is a one-time fee, and then the $1,200 would continue each year as a maintenance for any upgrades, and it would be part of the whole package of all the Munis modules that we have.
Thank you. Any other questions or debate on this? Okay, seeing none. I think we're ready to move to a vote, majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Okay, we're now ready to move on to Article 24, and you can see in your motion's handout that we have listed two motions, a motion one and a motion two. How we will handle motion two is a little bit more complicated, but we'll hold off on talking about that until we get there. First, I will recognize Mr. Ascalillo to make the motion under motion one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move motion one of Article 24 as written in the motion handout.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, and as soon as we get the technology up and running, Mr. Ascalillo, you please explain what we're doing here.
All right, so what we have to do every year is we have to, hey, Jim, there we go. What we have to do every year is we have to approve the budget before we can allocate and and start, well, I guess not necessarily before we start appropriations, but but basically, this is the way that the budget breaks out. So, the surcharge, that little 2% that you guys get on your tax bill every year, the money that's brought in from that's about $505,000. The state match was actually much better this year than it has been in the past, it was about 42%, so that got us about $213,000. It's actually projected to be about the same for next year as well. And then earnings on investment, I don't really know what that is, Kelly might be able to explain that better, but it always seems to be $3,000. I think maybe because this is a revolving or continuous fund, it sits somewhere where we gain some interest. So, that gets us a total this year of $721,360, so higher than it's been in in previous years because of that state match. And then we're required by law to allocate 10% to each of the three designated buckets, so community housing, historic, and open space, they'll all get $72,136. We always put about $3,000 aside for CPC administrative expenses. That really goes to paying dues for the Community Preservation Coalition. They're a group that that we work with, and they actually, they work with a number of towns in the state, and we discuss different projects with them, you know, what what's been accepted, what what seems to be problematic, what folks are going for. And also, too, they they lobby for us at the state, so it's a, it ends up being, I think, like $2,500, so it's $2,500 well-spent. And then the remainder of that goes into what's the budget reserve, and that's about $502,000, and then that's what carries over. That that's kind of our fluff line, if taxes don't come in, or if the match isn't exactly right, or if the investment's a little low, right? And we have to move the numbers around a bit. That's what we use, and then that ultimately turns into the undesignated fund next year.
Thank you. So, we have the motion under Article 1, and do we have a recommendation from the Select Board on this one? Oh, I guess, yes, we, well, no, they were deferred until town meetings. So, Select Board, any recommendation?
Yes, the Select Board voted unanimously to support this motion.
And FinCom, did you take a position?
We did not.
Okay. Any other boards or committees take a position on this? See, the Community Preservation Committee recommends adoption, I presume.
We, we didn't take a formal vote.
Didn't take a formal vote. No one's taking formal votes this year. I don't know, we're getting, we're getting Zoom lazy, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Floor is open for debate. Or any questions, even. We've been doing CPA for close to 20 years now, I guess, so I think we understand it. Okay. This is a majority vote, and if adopted, then all of these, the $700-some-thousand gets allocated into these various reserve buckets, as as outlined in the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries, and I so declare. I recognize Mr. Escolillo to make motion two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can I just describe the fund balances quick?
You can just move the motion as printed.
Okay, I move motion two of Article 24 as written in the motions handout.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, so let me take a moment to explain procedure Those of you who've been coming here for a long time may recall that the way we used to do things would be to vote separately on each and every single one of these motions, which takes perhaps more time than is necessary. So in recent years, what we've been trying to do is I consult with the Select Board, CPC, and try to make a prediction of which are, which of the sub-motions, the projects, may be more controversial or pose some questions. And what we try to do is hold those out so that those can be debated and voted separately. And the ones that look to be non-controversial, by motion of the moderator, I ask for the meeting's consent of, to put them in a consent agenda and, and so bundle them up so that they can all be considered in one shot. I want to continue with that procedure this year, and so what I'm proposing, if you look at the motions handout, you'll see we've got five different projects numbered A through E. My proposal is that we, that the meeting adopt, or consider by consent, the projects A, $60,000 for the Community Housing Reserve Fund, B, $25,000 from the Community Housing Reserve Fund to, to the Affordable Housing Trust and the Council on Aging. And then also, sub-motion E, so A, B, and E, with E being $11,500 from Open Space Reserve to the Conservation Commission for the Restoration of Cranberry Bog Dam Number One. And so, is there any objection to using this consent procedure that would consider A, B, and E together in one vote, and then consider the projects C, which is the Carlisle Castle, and D, the Dog Park, consider each of those separately? Any objection to that? Okay, so seeing no objection, we have the meeting's consent to proceed that way. So Mr. Escolillo, could you just briefly explain what's going on in A, B, and E, and then we'll see if there's any questions that need to be considered and moved to a vote?
Sure. So A is, last year, we voted $100,000 into a revolving fund. We called it the Development Fund for the Affordable Housing Trust, and essentially, they can use that to do due diligence, they can use it to do a housing production plan, or a variety of things that are ultimately housing-related and allowable by the state. They spent a portion of that $100,000 primarily on a housing production plan, and this is basically to just get it back up to that $100,000. B is $25,000 for rental assistance, so obviously, as we've been going through the pandemic, the need for rental assistance has increased and throughout the state, but also in Carlisle. So this is a joint venture between the Council on Aging and the Housing Trust to identify residents that could benefit from, and work with residents that could benefit from some rental assistance and need rental assistance. And then E is $11,500. So this is for the preliminary investigation of the Cranberry Bog Dam Number One. The dam needs to be replaced, but not as significantly, so don't worry, it's not a Greeno number. But it needs to be replaced, and, and right now, it's at the stage where we need to figure out exactly how much needs to be done, what needs to be done in order to get it to be a dam that the state, I forget exactly what the term is, it's, it's, what's that?
The Office of Dam Safety.
Yeah, it's the Office of Dam Safety, and basically, they've designated this as, what's the term?
Four.
Four, okay. Yeah, and essentially, but, but, so, so this is going to be to do some work to basically stabilize the dam so it doesn't fail. And it's much like with Greeno, it's kind of preemptively striking before the office comes in and says, you have to do it. So this is going to get us an idea of exactly where the costs are going to be, and I believe the intent is to come back in a fall town meeting and ask for more. But this is the initial step. It'll get us, you know, to a point where we need to be in September where, you know, we have an exact number, it can go out for bid, and, and we can determine, you know, exactly what the cost is going to be.
Thank you. So any questions, comments on any of these three? Seeing none, we will proceed to a vote. So we've divided the question under motion two. So the first part of the question is the adoption of sub-motion A, an allocation of $60,000 for community housing purposes, sub-motion B, $25,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust for rental assistance, and sub-motion E, $11,500 for preliminary work on the Cranberry Bog Dam. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. So we already have the motion has been made, as it were, for sub-motion C, which is the $325,000 allocation for the Carlisle Castle. So I recognize Mr. Brian Waterson to speak to that proposal.
Can I just give a quick update on the fund balances? Usually, somebody asks, and it's just kind of a.
Oh, and, okay, well, is this going to be like the last time you talk at a town meeting?
I hope so. I hope so. Fingers crossed. Well, before people spend money, they should know how much we have.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think FinCom would approve it. So, so, well, somebody always.
I'll, I'll let you do it.
Thank you. So somebody always asks, so I put it before, thinking that, that I'd have a chance to speak, but I guess not. So these are the, the fund balances currently in the buckets, since you guys approved the budgets. So there's $511,000 in the Housing Reserve Fund, there's $379,000 in the Historic Fund, and there's $312,000 in the Open Space Fund, and then there's almost $1.5 million in the Undesignated Fund. So the fund balances are very healthy. And then, don't forget about that budget reserve, which, that'll pop into the Undesignated next year. So, and then the way that we allocated it into each of the different buckets is that we're not going to zero anything out, so, yeah, but anyway, just healthy reserves. That's all. That's all.
Okay, so this is, this is like having college savings accounts for your different children.
Exactly.
Even, even though you don't know exactly when they're going to go to college or what the cost is going to be.
Right. But you know certain children are always going to spend open space, but.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Good. I'm glad we got that clarified. Okay. Mr. Waterson, we just wanted to give you a little break before you got started.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, everybody. While we're pulling up the presentation, Brian Waterson, Chair of the Castle Playground Project.
Yes?
May I ask a question about the previous vote?
Uh, sure, may or may not answer.
Jeremy Burley, 47 Hart Farm Road.
Mm-hmm.
The numbers that are printed in the warrant that's here were different than the ones on the, on the slide. We were voting on the ones on the slide, not the ones that are printed in the warrant. Is that correct?
Um, no, the, what was on the slide was not voted on. So what was shown on the slide is sort of like the, the current balance, which reflects allocations that have been made over the last 15 or 20 years that we've had the CPA in place. What we voted on in the previous vote was how much of the funds that have come in this year, how much goes into which bucket.
Okay.
Are we all set?
The slides don't seem to be on this computer.
They're not. Well, let me come take a look. 24C, right?
Yeah, but it's.
That was, oh, this was mislabeled. Okay. We should be fixing that.
Remember, it was my format.
But isn't that what you?
No.
Isn't that what you sent me in the email?
No, remember, I had all the different diagrams.
What was?
There it is. I've added one more.
Okay, so was that just the slide?
That's what you sent me.
I thought, oh, so it's this one.
It was in Google Slides. Is that going to be the problem?
No, it shouldn't.
Do you need a millennial, Wayne? I'll just speak to it. Okay. Nope, we're going to wing it. Who needs technology as a technology consultant? All right, so with the Castle Playground, I think as we all know, you've all been following the progress in various boards and commissions, as well as different updates that we've been sending to the mosquito, and we are looking to move forward with the build of the playground this coming fall. However, we have an application for CPA funds of $325,000, and the reason for that is really for two parts. Part one, and there, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, they're roughly even, I can get them if we need them. Part one is to cover the costs of the components that were not sponsored by so many generous members here tonight. And so we do have about six or seven components that we want to make sure are still part of the playground. Some of them are very important as it relates to accessibility and making sure that this is a playground that is inclusive for all students in Carlisle. So that's, you know, roughly 50% of the request. The balance is to allow for other things that we'll need in order to get ready and to wrap up the site. There is going to be some site prep that has to happen, dismantling the current castle, making sure 30 years of woodships are out of the way, you know, so that we're able to have a clean build site come early September. Also, if there's, you know, any, any boulders that perhaps have to get readjusted in order to, to put the pylons in place, and to do landscaping at the end. And so that is the, the reason for the, the request tonight, $325,000 focused solely on the playground. This is not for the classroom, this is not for the field, it is the, the playground components that we are looking to have available to our students come this fall.
I did figure out what the problem was. So we, we can access the slides if you, if you need them to answer any questions. So with this one, do, did the Select Board take a position on this?
Yes, we did. We voted to support this motion.
Thank you. And FinCom, any recommendation?
No.
Okay. Did we have recommendations from any other town boards or committees?
This is Scott Jameson from the Recreation Commission. We unanimously voted to approve it.
Thank you. Any other boards or committees take a vote? Okay, the floor is open for debate. Any questions, comments?
Hi, Hillary Taylor, 621 West Street. Could you just update us on the huge amounts of money that you've already raised?
Sure. Please explain that.
Yes, at this point, we have raised a little more than $1 million. The million comes from $150,000 from the Commonwealth. There has been some corporate sponsorship, but the majority of that million has come from very generous members, excuse me, members of the community who have either sponsored pieces of equipment, given sums that can be used for any parts of the project, or making other types of sponsorship.
I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the town and congratulate you because, and the town itself for raising so much money. It's really impressive.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the, the total project cost again is approximately how much?
So the playground itself, which is what we're focused on tonight, is just under 1.1 million. When we add in the classroom and the field, that does bring it to 1.3, but we're focused again on the playground tonight.
Okay, and of that 1 million cost, about 325, you're asking for support from CPA?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote on this. It's a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. So we are on to sub-motion D, which is for the Dog Park. And I'm sorry, I didn't write down your last name. So, Bittolari, Ms. Courtney Bittolari, I recognize to please explain what we have going on here with this motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. It's here, I can see it. My name is Courtney Bittolari. Been a resident of Carlisle for five years. I'm at 203 Fisk Street. Today, I am presenting on behalf of the Recreation Commission regarding building a Dog Park at Upper Banta Davis. Summary of the project, want to begin with the high-level summary so far. We've been working since 2018 to build the Dog Park. We were awarded a design grant that funds 100% of those costs. We were also awarded a construction grant that funds 90% of those costs. A design committee and landscape architect have developed plans. Planning board site review and permits occur after the construction grant is awarded, and today, we are seeking $30,000 from CPA. So what is a Dog Park? Just really briefly, it's an off-leash dog park, it's public, typically fenced, where people and their dogs can play together. There are currently 898 dog tags registered with the town today. Why does RecCom want to do this? A Dog Park provides a place for dogs and their owners to recreate, exercise, and socialize. It reduces the impact and footprint of dogs on our fields by aggregating them to a more manageable location and promotes responsible dog ownership. It creates a recreation opportunity that is available to Carlileans of all ages. Where in town would we do this? The red square on the aerial map that you're seeing here is the approximate location at Banta Davis, which has undeveloped land suitable for this purpose. at Banta Davis, which has undeveloped land suitable for this purpose. To orient you on this map, 225 is in the top left, oh, sorry, the top right corner, where the black and white dotted line is. The yellow arrow is depicting that there. Banta was chosen because the land today has no obvious other purpose. It is also under the auspices of the school committee and must be held onto in the event we need to build a new school. And so should only be developed with something relatively compatible or affordable to relocate. It is at the edge of Banta, not my saltz fits there unless the ball fields are relocated. These areas have been surveyed and tested for ledge, water, and soil conditions as part of a recreation expansion proposal in the early 2000s. The location is close to where we currently experience adverse impacts from dogs, thus it will entice owners to move their activity. No other location checks as many boxes for us. We don't want to have to build a new park, parking lot, or irrigation, which would be very costly. What would the dog park actually look like? This slide depicts plans that have already been drafted with our design architect. The design process was fully funded by the design grant, as a reminder. We've designed a large dog park, a large dog area, and a separate small dog area with a gathering space in the middle that spans both sides in the middle there. The yellow square depicts the entryway and the gathering space that I just mentioned, all of which are ADA compliant. For context, the large dog area is about 200 feet wide, and the small dog area is about 145 feet wide. How can Carlisle afford this? The recreation applied for N1, a grant from the Stanton Foundation. The Stanton Foundation was created by Dr. Frank Stanton, a longtime president of CBS, supports areas where he was unable to complete his charitable intentions during his lifetime. As part of its mission of encouraging canine health and welfare, the Stanton Foundation supports the development of enclosed dog parks in Massachusetts cities and towns. There have been over 38 grant recipients under their program so far, including the nearby dog park in Belrika and Chelmsford. That's my dog Jackie right there. And that's my dog Zoe. The Stanton Foundation funding works in two stages. There is the design grant, which funds 100% of the cost to design and approve a park for construction. We have already won and utilized this portion. The construction grant is the second component, which funds 90% of the construction costs. We are at this time in the design phase, approaching the construction phase. The critical step to obtaining the construction portion of the grant is confirming that we can meet the 10% of the construction costs, which is what we applied for via the CPA. Financial considerations, there are two general areas of finances here. The first one is the initial construction cost, which is what is depicted on the slide here. The Stanton Foundation reports that their grants range from $120,000 to $250,000 typically. This implies a cost to Carlisle of approximately $25,000 to $30,000. As mentioned several times already, the Carlisle portion, 10% of the total construction costs, is hoped to be funded from the CPA funds. The second area is ongoing maintenance. We do not expect regular maintenance to be very costly. Our contractor that maintains the fields today estimates it will be between $3,000 and $5,000 annually. For context, Carlisle spends about $100,000 annually on maintenance of the Banta Davis Spalding complex. In the event costs go up or will go up, we can scale back the scope of the dog park. We have many amenities we could reduce inside, in addition to the size overall, which ultimately results in less site prep, less materials, less fencing. As you can see, fencing is the most, one of the most, more expensive buckets here. To meet the requirement of communicating this plan to relevant city or town bodies and residents and abutters, we have presented to the school committee, FinCom, planning board, Board of Health, CPC, and Board of Selectmen. We've published plans in the mosquito on many occasions. We've held 30 open meetings of RecCom. We've formed a planning subcommittee. We've had discussions with the dog control officer at the time, Larry Sorley, as well as Tim Goddard. And we've consulted with dog owners and resident professional dog walkers. In summary, the Stanton Foundation pays for 90% of the build of the park and has already paid for 100% of the design costs, including the design and the total cost to accomplish this. Only 6.5 of the total cost of the park to develop this will be from Carlisle taxpayers' expense. This is a very financially efficient cost for a new amenity of this size for the town. We're asking for a vote of approval for $30,000 from CPA funds to ensure we can meet 10% of the construction costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bittolari. So the select board, your vote on this?
We voted to approve this unanimously.
Thank you. And FinCom did not take a vote?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. Recommendations from any other town boards or committees?
Tony Mariano, 1134 North Road, Chair of Board of Health. Board of Health voted to support this.
Thank you. Any other boards or committees?
Jack Contris, 208 Balden Road, Chair of the School Committee. Although we did not take a position on this funding, we did author a letter of support in favor of the construction of the dog park.
Thank you. Any other boards or committees? Okay, with that, we're open for debate, or any questions? Okay, seen none. I think we're ready for a vote. This is a... Oh, I'm sorry.
Francois Baldon from 385 Curve Street. I do not have a dog, but I would like to know who can use the, if this dog park, the access will be controlled, and whether the dogs are going to be vaccinated that go there. This is a concern from, remember, my family that has three dogs that was conceived.
Can you address that, please?
Sure. So the first part was who is allowed to come to the dog park? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we don't have a plan to regulate it to just Carlisle residents, but in terms of thinking about if the park gets busy, or if we're concerned about other people from the town, from other towns coming to the dog park, I don't think that's a concern top of mind today, given that we have Belrika, we have, I believe, one in Maynard, and also one in Chelmsford. This would probably attract more Carlisle residents, and it would be up to the dog owners themselves to decide their comfort level, should there be other people at the park. In terms of vaccinated dogs, the design committee is discussing signage and requirements for attending the dog park. I would imagine that the vaccination topic would come up at that time when we design the signage and the rules of attending the park.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then let's proceed to the vote. This is a majority vote, $11,000, I'm sorry, $30,000 for the dog park from the Open Space Reserve Fund. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion requires a majority vote. Let me have a show of the cards, just to make absolutely sure. She probably put them all away, so let me just make sure everyone's had a chance to get them out. Have to remember next time to ask you to at least do a couple of card votes at the beginning, so people don't lose them. Okay, all those in favor, please hold up your blue cards. Okay, any opposed? Okay, that does have a majority, so motion carries, and I so declare. We're now on to Article 25, which is proposing an amendment to the general bylaws concerning a fall special town meeting. I recognize Ms. Rebecca Viera to make the motion.
Rebecca Viera, Chair of the Carlisle Governance Task Force, and I live at 48 Bingham Road. And I move that the town accept Article 25 as printed in the motion's handbook.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Viera, could you please speak to the motion?
Sure. This motion proposes to add a regularly scheduled special town meeting in the fall. As many of you actually may have been respondents to a survey that the Carlisle Governance Task Force conducted, there was quite a lot of feedback about accessibility to town meeting because of some of the length of time. Previous town meetings had gone, as well as just general conflicts with having it one night a year, and that sometimes it then carries over to two nights a year, and so, right after each other. And so then folks don't get to participate maybe in the second night. So this would hopefully alleviate the stress and burden that is on the annual town meeting in the spring, so that we could have the fall town meeting.
Thank you. The select board voted to support this article, and I presume FinCom did not take a vote. It's not a financial article.
Actually, we did vote not to support this article.
Not to support the fall town meeting article? Okay. All right, thank you. My mistake. Votes of any other town boards or committees? Okay, floor is open for debate. Any particular comments? Mr. Trellin?
Just wanted to provide an explanation of why, excuse me, why FinCom took a position against this article. Is this this mic, or... Okay, that's better. So we took a position to not recommend this article based on some fiscal concerns we have that this bylaw change might have if approved. And there's just, there's just two points I want to make. One was expressed by the Finance Director when this was proposed, and that is that after tonight, there's a whole process that happens at the state level, at the accounting level, that ultimately results in tax rates being set, and audits being done, and ultimately the completion of the budget process. That's all kind of behind the scenes. One of the key steps in that is the budget recap, which is done by the state. And if you have a fall town meeting on the schedule, they typically will delay that recap until after that town meeting, because at that scheduled town meeting, there are financial warrants that can be proposed, passed, and ultimately accept your fiscal standing, whether you pass a warrant that takes on additional debt that year, or you make budget amendments at that town meeting. So by moving to this approach, where we have a regularly scheduled special town meeting, there is potential to delay that process. This would, this would happen if we had a special town meeting in any event, but by doing this, there's concerns that there's increased delays, and apparently this is something that's, that is discussed at the various municipal meetings that are, that are held. The second area of concern is from the annual budgeting process. Tonight, Jim laid out the annual budget. We do this every year. We present the operating budget, we factor in the warrants, and the numbers that we present factor in all the potential expenses that may be approved tonight. And of course, we can have special town meetings. We've done that in the past, we can do it again, where we have to address financial or non-financial important special topics that need to be addressed before the next town meeting. But the concern is that if we move to a regular special town meeting, we may fall into a situation where we see more financial warrants, more potential for budget changes, and that brings additional uncertainty into the budgeting process, so that, you know, in five years, we may sit here tonight and say, here's the budget we're approving with the big asterisks of come September, October, and November, this budget may be changed. It makes it difficult to make those trade-offs and make those decisions in the annual town meeting if there's greater opportunity in six months to revise those budget numbers or to introduce new financial articles. So I think the view is that the current bylaws, as they are, freely allow for special town meetings when necessary, and it minimizes budget uncertainty. This proposed bylaw has the potential to introduce additional delay and uncertainty into the budgeting process.
Thank you. Any other comments or arguments from the...
Do I get to speak to that a little bit? Okay.
Let me see if there are others. Okay, I'll recognize Ms. Viera.
Thank you. So I think, as you alluded, Scott, the, there are opportunities within the bylaw already to bring a special town meeting, to bring budget article, or not budget articles, big articles, that I think may have the budgetary impact, so, and that the bylaw actually would require it anyway. So I think despite the fact that that sounds a little scary, I think the reality is, is that it's not a huge change for what exists today. It just gives the opportunity to plan some of the, or to hear some of the interim issues that come up, that are maybe not budgetary, that are more social, political, at that fall town meeting. And not, again, not have lengthy, lengthy hours of town meeting. This one's gone pretty fast. This is, I'm a new resident to Carlisle, I'm a year here, but I have heard some stories about late nights, and so my six-and-a-half-year-old is camped out in the other room with a sleeping bag, in case this one went long. But to avoid having that kind of situation for folks, this, especially in light of the resident feedback that we received, was a rational proposal, so.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Okay, let's proceed to a vote, as long as you've got your cards out, we'll just ask them, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by showing your blue voting card. And those opposed? Motion fails to achieve a majority, and I declare that it does not pass. Okay, on to Article 26, which is the term of the Town Governance Task Force. Ms. Viera?
Sure. Okay, so this one, I move that the town vote to authorize the continued operation of the Town Governance Task Force through the earlier of a fall town meeting in 2022, or December 31, 2022, after which, oh, after which time it shall be dissolved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and the select board has recommended passage of this article. Ms. Viera, could you please explain this one?
Yes, in last year's annual town meeting, the Governance Task Force was established. It was a bit vague as to the term length, so this would clarify that. Also, because of the COVID timeframe of when the town meeting was held in, later in the year, in June, and then when this town meeting is held tonight, it was a much shorter duration to complete all of the work than I think everyone had expect, or anticipated. There's still a bit to be done in order to finalize the report, and so that's why we've proposed this one.
Thank you. As I said, the select board recommended passage. Did FinCom take a position on this?
No, we did not.
Thank you. Okay, floor, any other boards or committees take a position? Okay, the floor is open for debate. Any comments, questions? Okay, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. And with that, we do come to the end of the warrant. I'd like to thank everyone who helped put this meeting together tonight, not only your efforts this evening, but as we've heard and we all know, a lot of work goes into putting all of these articles and motions together over many months. So thank you to everyone who's been working on it. I would remind people that we do have the town election coming up on Tuesday, May 10. Polls are open at Town Hall from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And with that, I will take a motion to dissolve this annual town meeting.
No.
And a second? Okay, and you may all vote with your feet. Meeting is dissolved. Thank you.[1781.51][1781.51][applause]